We could have three hours.
I came from East Haven and that was clear. There's a lot of gray couples.
Every major road.
You don't need it down.
My daughter lives up there, said it was a mess. Kids were scared, they went out, the trees were falling down.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it needs to be, although. I asked them, then I forgot to ask them. Was she here?
Then it has a big tree down there.
She might be.
You know what? You know? You know what I mean?
Call the town council meeting to order for Tuesday, May fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at seven eleven P M. We'll start first with salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call? Here.
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 Councillor Fawnan.
Here.
Councillor Miller.
Here.
Councillor Rose.
Here.
Councillor Bigleal.
Here.
And Councillor Zampano.
Here.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to amend the agenda for tonight. I propose, under item two, propose B for W P C A, regional water authority discussion.
What'd you say, two? B two? For minutes?
Under two, you have A for W P C A and town council meeting, that's the minutes of the previous meeting.
Right.
And I propose a B to, for a discussion on, under W P C A, for regional water authority.
So that's B.
But, but it's, but it's not.
Our iPad does not match the agenda that we got on paper.
Yeah.
Is it a W P C A meeting tonight?
No.
It's not?
No.
No, it's a second.
Because I'll second what George wanted to do if we could do that.
But it's not minutes.
It's not a W P C A.
But it's, but it's, the category is minutes of previous meetings.
I wouldn't put it in that category, but. We don't have, we don't have the W P C A tonight.
But can't.
You could put it under new business if you wanted something to discuss on your new business.
Well, it's not new business, it is, in fact, was previously introduced, which is why, which is why it's. Can we do W P C A issue under unfinished business? If we can, then we suggest that we do it. Oh, it is E. Ms. Mayor?
B.
Well, just wait.
Hold up.
Just, just as a point of order, I would just raise a concern that you're, you're meeting this evening as a town council only, not as a W P C A and town council? I understand the business is coming from last month's agenda, but it was under the section of W P C A. And my only concern would be as a matter of notice, the public was not on notice that you were meeting tonight as a W P C A. Out of an abundance of caution, if it's a matter that can hold, I think it's more prudent to wait until you reconvene as the W P C A. If it's a matter that you feel requires urgency and needs to be addressed tonight, I only want to put out that I, I do, don't think you're meeting tonight as a W P C A and therefore, since you, you're bringing up an issue that the W P C A needs to take into consideration, there, there may be a, it may be out of order for purposes of your agenda.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your opinion. I'll, I will revisit it at citizen's statements.
All right.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Yeah, somebody make it?
I'm involved in.
Second.
Second.
Any corrections? Roll call?
Mayor Duddy.
Yes.
Deputy Mary Angeloni.
Yes.
Councillor Candelaure.
Yes.
Councillor Diamond.
Yes.
Councillor Fawnan.
Yes.
And Councillor Miller.
Yes.
Councillor Rose.
Yes.
Councillor Bigleal.
Yes.
Councillor Zampano.
Yes.
Next, we'll move into the regular town council meeting. Reports of committees, boards and commissions, economic development commission.
They have not met since the last, last report.
They didn't meet last week? I thought they were being introduced to the new E D C quarters.
You're right. I'm losing track, I'm sorry.
I was on vacation, so I wasn't at the meeting, but I thought, I saw an agenda.
Yes, it was good meeting. Roger Sawway was introduced to the economic development commission and they had long, lengthy discussions on his activities and what he's planning to go do for the commission. And he's taking on a number of, of meetings and outreach to various business owners. I know that he's met with realtors, he's met with Penn Globe, he's met with E S I, he's got another list of, trying to get him to meet with Firelight, and the list goes on and on. So, right now, I think his energy is focused on, you know, getting his face out there, meeting people, making contacts with the chamber, making contacts with recs, making a lot of different contact. And then a plan in terms of looking at the survey that we did and looking at, you know, needs and, and sort of a listening tour, if you will, with the business owners. And I think that was well received. I think he's going to be helping with members of the commission that are assisting the Poco Festival and putting on the event for August. I think he's going to assist with that. So it's very good, I think, very positive meeting, the first good two weeks start for, for that individual and, and that's about it, I guess, for, for E D C.
Thank you. Parking rec?
They will meet next week.
Police commission?
The police commission is meeting tonight, they're doing interviews. Their next meeting is on June eleventh, but I would like to make a motion to add something to the new business. I would like to make a motion to allow the police commission to hire an additional police officer if a vacancy becomes available in the next sixty days. And the reason I'm asking that is, there's a potential of a vacancy and if police commission isn't giving them the opportunity to hire somebody, they won't be able to get the person into the academy. There's a sixty to ninety day window right now. And the police commission is asking if I, that I would make that motion.
So you wanna, um.
I would put that one under, that would be new business.
You want to lift the hiring freeze or you want, what do you want to do?
I guess that would be N under new business. To, to allow, if a vacancy becomes available in the next sixty to ninety days, to allow the police commission to hire an additional police officer. Otherwise, they won't be able to get the person into the academy.
So we'll just call it lift hiring freeze for a police department and then we'll have the discussion when it comes up?
Yeah.
So you want to add that to the?
Do you want to add that to new business?
Otherwise, there's a long period of time.
Yes, otherwise, they're able to get, if there's a, a very long period of time.
Right, right.
And there is a potential of another vacancy.
Yeah, that's not a good thing, to wait that long.
Okay, I'll second Maury's motion.
Thank you.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duddy.
Yes.
Deputy Mary Angeloni.
Yes.
Councillor Candelaure.
Yes.
Councillor Diamond.
Yes.
Councillor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councillor Miller.
Yes.
Councillor Rose.
Yes.
Councillor Bigleal.
Yes.
Councillor Zampano.
Yes.
That's it on the police commission?
That's it.
Fire commission?
Uh, fire commission, they met last Thursday. And the chief gave us a monthly activity report. It's a summary of all the calls that they've done for this year and also for up until April thirtieth, thirty, thirty first. It has the, the response times, the time on the scene, incident type, what, what type of call it was. Very informative. I have all the information here if anybody wants to see it. Uh, next thing is the status of apparatus. Engine, engine one was found to need repairs, the motor had to be rebuilt. So, the chief contacted Eddie Botland, they went over to pull it apart, and it needs to be rebuilt. And that's, I believe they're doing that now, right Anthony?
Correct.
It's being done now. Uh, the, engine one is, that's right up here on Route eighty. And it's being replaced by engine eleven, I think. Engine eleven, yeah. I don't know how long, a month for the repairs?
I don't know, five months.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't know either. Uh, so that's, that's in the process of getting done. And that'll add some years onto the engine itself, so it saves us from buying another one. And the, the last thing I have here is, and, and the chief talked to me about this. He, he, he went on to Otucket TV with Dan Arman, Dan Show, gave an interview. So it might be interesting to watch and see what he has to say. He's very knowledgeable about what he does. Uh, that's, that's about it.
Thank you. Board of Education, Town Council Communication Subcommittee?
No meeting.
Town Planning Goals Subcommittee?
Town Planning Goals Subcommittee will meet on June fifth at six fifteen. And I'd also like to make a motion that the council would add our town planner, Carrie DuPass, to the Town Planning Goals Subcommittee.
Michael, you checked with Carrie on that, right? She has no problem with that?
Yeah, no problem at all.
Okay. Great.
She said she'd love to be.
Carrie's now a member. Thank you, Carrie.
Is it automatic? Okay, good. She's been appointed. Thank you.
All right.
She knew it was coming.
Public Safety Communications Committee.
No, no meeting.
Do you have a, someone move a motion to second it? Do you need a roll?
It's kind of a, just a consensus.
Consensus, it wasn't a motion.
There wasn't a second to it and it just became an appointment.
He said it, so it is.
It is.
Planning and zoning commission?
I defer to George, he covered for me.
I covered the, uh, planning and zoning on May third. They were continuing two public hearings that had a lot of interest. One at eleven eleven Foxen Road, which we know is Dollar General area, and the other at three, sixty-three Totucket Road. The eleven eleven Foxen Road was to change the zoning from R, from R forty to B one. There was a lot of, uh, pub, uh, public comment on that. The hearing was closed and the board ended up voting in favor of rezoning to B one. And most of their decision was based on the feedback from the town councils, uh, town attorney's office, which rendered an opinion. The second public hearing, which continued and was also closed for the thirteen lot subdivision, found that most of the people who were testifying and asking questions were satisfied with what was offered. The public hearing was closed and the commission voted to approve that subdivision.
Is that the Spazano Farm or was the Spazano, by Borrelli and Totucket?
That's the chief's farm. Yeah, it's inside of the road.
Oh, okay.
The thirteen lot subdivision.
Thank you. East Shore Health Department?
We need to appoint someone because Anthony had resigned from that duty work and he can't make it, so that we don't have anyone on that committee, on that board.
Town managers' report, update on Floyd Parnas Recognition Committee. I think the committee chairs here, right?
Yeah.
We met on May ninth, Jared Jamison, the student representative. I, I asked Anthony to help represent the town council along with myself. And we came up with an idea of to create a type of monument and use a rock through Tilcon and attach a plaque to it. And the location, I put in a diagram to show where the, where they wanted, you know, where Jared and his group wanted to try to put it. It would be in, in a similar, along the tree line where the entrance comes from the parking lot into the Potato Fest. And it's kind of like where the, where the starting line is for the cross country. And it, and somewhere in that general area doesn't, trying to keep it not, not in the way of anything would be the idea. The cost, Tilcon's willing to donate a, a rock. And then the cost of a plaque, not quite sure, but maybe two thousand dollars or something. But Jared had mentioned that they're, they're going to do fundraising to, to, they would, they would do fundraising if it was approved for the, for the plaque. And then.
Was wording discussed for the plaque?
Uh, no, I, I asked him to come up with that. The, the reason why I wanted to bring it to the meeting is because they'd like to, if it were approved, they'd like to have it available for the Potato Fest. So they need time for their fundraising and so forth and so on. So, you know, right now, we're looking for, we're looking, I brought it here to see if the concept was acceptable. And then, you know, the wording can, we can approve the wording at another, another meeting, I thought. Does anyone have any questions on it? I mean, I.
I think, I think it's a good idea, the rock. I like that. How big would the plaque be?
Not rea, not really sure, you know, because I told them, well, we kind of discussed and we kind of kicked around that more is usually le, or, excuse me, less is usually better, you know, just to get your, your idea out there, you know, on that plaque.
Like a twelve by twelve or something?
Yeah, you know.
You know, those are, those are a normal size.
Well, I think it'll depend on the rock, because we just went through down at the Northford, the North Branford Congregational Church, when we had to move the monuments and we had to put them back, and we just did plaques on those rocks. And it, you know, was dependent on the size and the flat area of the rock as to how big the plaque could be.
Right, Gary Wall, I'd recommend, he says, you know, I told him it was just a concept, you know, just an, we have an idea. And, you know, he's all for it. And he said, you know, if, if you, if you're going to move ahead with it, you come up there and pick out a rock with a nice flat area. That was his recommend, you know, his, his offer. So.
Can I ask the people, are they interfered with that before?
No, it would be, you know, when you walk in right, here, here's a picture of it.
It's going to be between that tree, tree and the fence there?
Where, yeah.
You know, that tree line comes down and it ends and there's that picket fence. Somewhere in that area, trying to keep it out of the way of anything. So that would be the idea.
Want to make a motion?
Yeah. I'd like to make, oh, do I make it?
Sure.
Yeah. Go for it.
We don't want to take anything away from you. You had it all tonight.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, the idea of, the concept of putting a memorial for Floyd Parnas by the, in the Potato Fest area.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duddy.
Yes.
Deputy Mary Angeloni.
Yes.
Councillor Candelaure.
Yes.
Councillor Diamond.
Yes.
Councillor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councillor Miller.
Yes.
Councillor Rose.
Yes.
Councillor Bigleal.
Yes.
And Councillor Zampano.
Yes.
And would there be a future meeting i, agenda item for, for the language?
Yes.
Somewhere down the road?
Yeah. Yeah. Just wanted to get over this hurdle first.
Can we, just make sure that they thought, because we argued some work over there, like that tree's going to be gone.
Okay.
So, and just to let them know, you know, that could be, you know, we, if we ever have to move it for some other reason, obviously, we'll let them know, but it'll be in the general area. We argued, probably have to do some work there.
All right. Thanks, Frank.
And to Franny's point, which is a very good one, on the bit of moving them, when we were talking about all these monuments in town and stuff with the last town attorney, the way, the way I understood it is, you know, you can have a monument, but a future town council can move it or remove it, you know, by a simple, simple vote. So, you know, what, this town council can't encumber a, a future town council. So, you know, people with these monuments have to understand that, you know, the town's life is a long time and maybe a hundred years from now, it's not a good place to have a rock.
Anything else under your report, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay. Community events and presentation, invitation to march in the Memorial Day Parade.
Yeah, you should have the flyer in there, packet.
Yeah, it's in here. That's in the Northford section of town this year?
Correct.
Yep.
And it alternates?
Mm-hmm. It's on page sixteen in our, if you're on the iPad.
It said, basically, on behalf of the North Branford, town of North Branford and veterans of North Branford, Northford, I'd like to extend the invitation to participate in your Memorial Day Parade, which will be held on May twenty eighth, two thousand and eighteen at ten A M. This year's parade will be held in the Northford section town lineup will be at St. Monica, St. Ambrose Church, which is located at thirteen thirty-one Middletown Avenue in Northford at nine A M. The parade will start promptly at ten. After the parade, the veterans of North Branford, Northford will conduct a service on the green to commemorate the true meaning of Memorial Day. And the, the event will conclude with refreshments at company number two firehouse. Looking forward to seeing you. Sincerely, Gina Cox, parade coordinator. All right. Next item, citizen's statements, petitions and correspondence.
Well, I said I was going to make a statement at this time, and I am. I'm a little dis, I'm a little disappointed that it is under citizen's statements, because I had hoped that there would be a discussion about it. But at our last meeting, we had a presentation about the regional water authority and their wish to increase their discharge into our sewer lines. And I've been thinking about it and I'm concerned about it and I'm not happy about it. And I wanted to bring it up because the presentation asked for a five-year increase, which is not a very long period of time, and an increase of twenty-five percent or perhaps a bit more of discharge. And it suggests to me that for the regional war, water authority and their operations, something has changed. And I don't know what that is. And there was no one here to make that presentation for the regional, by the regional water, water authority. And I think that if the regional water authority is asking for a change in usage to this town council, they should be here making that presentation. Furthermore, there was no expectation of there being anything other than perhaps some increase in dollars. And the regional water authority, as we all know, occupies a tremendous portion of this community. And Lake Gallard, as we all know, does not allow access, differing from many of their other facilities. So where other towns have the benefit of recreational uses at some of their sites, we don't. There's admittedly a small area of, of access in, in Northford, but for this end of town with, which has great access opportunities, there is none. And I certainly think that if they have a change in their usage, we should be questioning whether there can be a change for this community in access to that for recreational purposes as they offer elsewhere. I'm also concerned, perhaps out of ignorance, but we, we've always talked about having limited capacity for our, for our sewage lines. And this, this sounds like a burden that could perhaps, if, if it was granted for a period of time, impede future development elsewhere. And I think we should be very, very cautious of that. And finally, it gets further compounded because I've heard the regional water authority argue that water usage has dropped and is a source of concern to them for their business. So why this is having an increase in, in their discharge, I'm totally confused. And I would really prefer that a presentation was made by the regional water authority on their own behalf.
Well, I think we tabled it last meeting because we all had concerns, you know, on the cost and what they're doing.
Well, the fact of the matter is that I asked for it to be on tonight's agenda. It did not show up on tonight's agenda. I called to ask, I was told that it would be on the next agenda. And I frankly didn't want it to show up on the next agenda with, with me having reservations about it and not have the opportunity to have some of my concerns considered before it gets presented to this council.
Well, that's a perfect opportunity. Maybe we should schedule somebody from the water company here. And maybe we should relook at some of our recreational, I mean, we've been asking for that for twenty years, if not more, Al. You know, and Al's been on as long. And I know other people asked for the definition why North Branford doesn't have the same recreational access that other towns have. I know the towns have a lot of recreational access. So maybe it's time to open that ball up. If they want something from us, maybe they should give us something.
Okay. I'll reach out, I'll, I'll request that they send representatives to talk us.
So on the discharge and also on the recreational aspect.
Sure.
Is that good, George?
At a minimum.
Yeah. I mean, is there anything more we need to ask?
I think we should have a, an understanding of what it is that they want, why they want it, and, and have negotiations as to how this can work beneficially for this community.
Now, those are the questions Michael will present to them. All right, moving on. Any other citizen's statements? See, move on. Yep.
Sure. I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
Chuck Larkins, City Two, Clear Lake Manor Road. I'm here again this year to represent the Northford and North Branford's women's clubs. Are going to have the flag event again. We're going to sell flags as a fundraiser for veterans organizations. And I'm here to extend an invitation to all the council members that we'd love you to come, participate, speak if you'd like to. Councilwoman Diamond and Angeloni, you have in the past, I appreciate that. You're welcome to come again and we'd really like to see your participation out there. And I thank all the town people and organizations that helped support that event. It does take more than just the women's clubs wanting to do something. The town manager, Anthony, the town public works department, everyone. There's an effort made on a lot of people. So I wanted to thank them also.
Flag day is when, Chuck?
It'll be June fourteenth, seven P M. And the flags will be up through the Fourth of July. If you want to retrieve your flag after that, they will be in the vestibule as they have in the past for a short period of time. And you can retrieve your flag if you want to maintain it for yourself.
And people can purchase them through?
Yes, there's a website, there's forums at the libraries and other town businesses. I don't know all the town businesses, but there have been flyers and applications put out throughout the town.
There was just something in the. There was just something in the Totucket Times this week.
I was just gonna say, in the Totucket Times, there was a website listed. And you can, uh, file your, you know, request through that also.
Thank you.
At the Memorial Day Parade, I, I plan on having something set up to sell it. We tried last year, but the weather killed us last year. But we'll try again this year, weather permitting. Hopefully, we can get some good sales out of, uh, the parade event. Any other questions?
Thanks, Chuck.
All right, thank you.
All right, next item is resignations and appointments. Appointment of Betty Jo Pettinoester to Ethics Commission, term to expire twelve thirty-one, two thousand eighteen.
So moved?
Second.
And I'd like to point out that there isn't, um, a bio, a short bio in your, in your folder. Couldn't get it in on time. For the laptop.
Discussion. Roll call?
Mayor Dilly.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councillor Campbell-Laura.
Yes.
Councillor Diamond.
Yes.
Councillor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councillor Miller.
Yes.
Councillor Rose.
Yes.
Councillor Vigno.
Yes.
Councillors Zambiano.
Yes.
And next item is unfinished business, discussion and action, approval of ordinance, proposed ordinance twenty seventeen dash one, chapter forty, entitled Fire Department. It's tabled until July. Next is future budget planning initiative.
Let me ask you a question before. I've been looking at this for six months now. Is there a reason why we're waiting until July? I don't.
Yeah, we discussed it one in the council meeting.
Okay, okay. Okay. I was just wondering.
Yeah, that's why it was.
Okay.
Next is future budget planning initiative.
I have no idea.
Next is review of Board of Education rules and?
Oh, hang on, let's go back to future budget planning.
Okay.
So I did see, I did see in here something about solar panels on some roofs and stuff. Did we, did you ever find anybody about doing something on like a field or something somewhere? Like a big, a big, uh, solar farm? And the only reason I ask is that I know the town of Branford is doing one. And, and it's quite large and the numbers must work for them. So, maybe we should talk to Branford Town Hall and see how and why they are doing such a big project and how they think the numbers work.
Yeah, there are.
What did we hear on it?
There are a few towns doing it. I, I don't know specifics from Branford, but certainly call and find out. And I don't know what the, what the numbers are.
Terryville's got one next to their high school, a big, big one.
Yeah.
They said it runs the whole school.
Did we ever find anyone to look at any land in town?
We had that one company we talked about, um, for the, um, we talked with the, uh, the old dump facility, the, uh, cap landfill. Uh, but the slopes are, are too steep, uh, to do that. And there's, and there's some wet, so it didn't, they went out to evaluate it and look at it, but it, it just, it's not, not possible.
So that wouldn't work, but we own a lot of big fields in town. So, I mean, I think what's important is to get the numbers. Like what is Branford gonna bring in or save?
Yeah.
And then you decide whether we wanna give up a big field for one.
Right. Yeah, those, the, in terms of, of these, these ground mounts and?
Ground mountain ones, yeah.
Yeah, Terryville's been up and running for a couple of years. If you get ahold of somebody up there.
Sure.
And I think it's their high school, which is, which was brand new.
Because the, the technology's changing in solar, it's getting, you know, it's getting better. And in one of my, uh, trade magazines as a builder, every new house built in California has to have solar panels on the roof. Starting in twenty twenty. So, um, you know, it's something we should look at.
They're viable, they're, they're up and running around the state, so there are plenty of examples to use. And I'll certainly talk to Branford. As you see in later, and this could, I could have, I was thinking whether or not to put this whole solar project on this item of, of saving money. But I figured to put it as a separate item to look at. But that's the thought process to look at. You know, you'll see in the diagrams for the schools, uh, again, the issue we can speak to when it comes up, but there's, there are illustrations for brown mounts to, to, to do that. So, we can, we can certainly explore that. Carrie's been a great help to me in terms of talking with the solar companies and gathering technical information and understanding of how projects work with the state involvement with these things called Z-Rex. But we'll get into that into the presentation. But I'll go back and bring this back for the next meeting with respect to water.
There's a lot of property still between the intermediate school and high school that butts up to what Dory Drive? Al, isn't that still open?
Yeah, I think it is.
Property. There's a lot of property there. All right, um, review of Board of Education rules, policies, procedures and policy.
So I think we should, uh, we should talk about this and, and put it to bed. So to refresh everyone's memory, you know, we voted to, you know, we voted to send it to the state attorney's office and then, uh, put it on the shelf. We then asked, um, you have to look and see what the Board of Ed did, different members. And then we asked this attorney to reach out to their attorney. And I don't think you ever reported on that to us, but you did tell us individually that he doesn't wanna talk to you either.
Yeah, no, I think I, I, if I didn't report publicly, I did have a conversation, uh, with him and his position was what I thought it would be in that any discussions between he and the Board of Ed would be protected under the attorney-client privilege.
And I don't think anybody here's surprised at that. So, one of the problems that, that, that I had with it was that when you talk to different board chairs over the last few years under this administration, um, a lot of the board chairs were told by this administration, and they tell us that this attorney was telling them as well, that they could act alone. And they could give benefits and encumber the taxpayer all by themselves. And, you know, I do believe that the Board of Ed has, because we called them out on it and threatened to send them to the state attorney's office, I believe they've got policies in place at the moment so that shouldn't happen. But then, when you talk to some people, you know, on the Board of Ed, they're like, well, you know, the administration feels it all depends on who's on the Board of Ed at the time. And so I, I don't know what to do with this. But I think that we've been carrying this on the agenda, so we should either hope that their rules, you know, have corrected the problem and that this administration over there has learned their lesson. Or what do we do with it? You can all jump in at once.
I, I think the way I saw and heard was that they basically voted that there's no more will of the board. You know, and they voted a lot of their policies and procedures in. So we just hope that this board lives with them and every other board after that. I mean, they have a policy manual now and they have, you know. So, I have a feeling that they'll live with it unless we get a real renegade board or something like that, that?
Yeah.
But they're gonna have to step very far over it to get around the, the adopted policies that were voted on and sworn on by the board. So.
So is everybody comfortable with where we're at with the Board of Ed now?
I am.
Well, I'm not sure.
I'm not either.
I'm not sure because, um, there's policies, but, um, do, is there a way to, I, I don't know, there's no oversight, right? Is that how, that the Board of Ed has no oversight in a sense, do they? Ben?
When you say?
Well, what I mean by, by that is, you know, as years go by, maybe, you know, things get forgotten.
From an oversight standpoint, so, I mean, functionally, I mean, what you're asking is through the budgetary process, once you approve their budget, they are given a sum certain, that's their budget, within which to work. Uh, they have various commitments that, that they have to satisfy within that budget. I mean, the, in a sense, the oversight is annual through the budgetary process, but it's not daily to address, I think, the concerns that have been raised based on past practice. So, uh, obviously oversight, meaning all their meetings are supposed to be in public, they're supposed to be subject to, uh, the agenda process and the minute process. So you're free, anyone's free to inspect those minutes. And if they see some missteps along the way, uh, that's, in a sense, you're, you, you may not want your, that to be your job or your obligation, but if you have that concern, those are things that you can do. There, uh, you know, from a finance standpoint, a, uh, the, the, the business manager, uh, should have an understanding from a payroll standpoint, uh, what the various positions are being funded at based upon whether existing contracts, whether it be collective bargaining agreements. And there should not be increases to those without sufficient process. Meaning someone shouldn't just be able to walk into a business manager's office and say, so-and-so's getting a raise of fifty cents an hour and that get processed just because. There should be process in place which, uh, the Board of Ed really, if the, if it's not joined with, on the town side, then the Board of Ed should have those policies and procedures in place for its business manager to adhere to. That's the only way to do it. But is there any certainty? There's no certainty in anything.
Right, so, I guess, I guess, uh, their basic oversight or accountability even is, is the, uh, the voter, basically, the, the citizens, just like we are.
Correct.
We're accountable to the, to the, to the voters, to the, to the members of North Branford, just as the Board of Ed. So, you know, we're not, I, I think it's, we have to be careful that the, the people in town know that they're accountable to the townspeople more so than to, uh, the town council. Am I correct, I think I'm correct by saying that.
You say they're accountable, everyone's accountable on election day.
Right, what I'm saying is they're, they're elected by the, the town to do their, and that's, and so we have the confidence that they do their, 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 uh, their, their job properly, just like they're having the confidence in voting for the town council. So I, I think we have to be, what I'm trying, I guess what I'm trying to say is we have to be careful that we're, we're, it seems that, you know, I sat on, out, out there for last year watching things develop and it, we have to be careful that we're not trying to police it in a sense that no more than the, the voter, because they're not accountable to the town council.
Well, that's, that's somewhat debatable, all right? And that is because under your charter, this body does retain certain authority that other bodies do not have, and that is the oversight authority. There is a question as to whether or not that extends to a Board of Education because that is actually an arm of the state rather than a actual municipal body. But, uh, putting that issue aside for the moment, I think that this body, in the generic sense, in the everyday sense, with respect to this municipality, is the policing authority. You have the oversight over other boards and commissions. So if we leave that other issue that I raised aside, aside for the moment, if you, uh, as was a matter of concern, uh, miss deeds being done within the Board of Ed's administration, I don't think it's inappropriate for this body to question it as it did and to take what it feels to be appropriate steps to correct it, which I believe it did. Now, the question is, well, all right, if there are rules and procedures in place, if the question is, well, is that enough? Well, what more can you do at this point is really the question. And, you know, if there are rules and procedures in place that are satisfactory to you at this moment, then there's nothing more for you to do other than to be mindful of what they're doing and to occasionally, you know, maybe audit what they're doing by way of looking at their minutes and what they're doing. And if you're seeing someone stepping outside the boundary again, you know, then take appropriate action at that point in time. But I don't think you can exist in a, in a, in a, in a, in a universe where you're constantly micromanaging what they're doing. I think that's impossible.
Right, okay.
I, I think, Michael brought, or Vinnie brought up a tremendous point. I think combining the two finance departments would be very beneficial for both, um, the Board of Ed and the town.
And a lot of municipalities have done that to save money. So.
I, I would, my other question would be the surety, I think, that people have the concern about when a contract is signed, when, when a decision is made by the board, the procedure that it's clearly, it's clear to everybody when whoever, obviously the chair of the board is gonna sign that contract, that everybody in the board has seen that contract, that there's a proper procedure, and in a way almost signs that contract in front of the rest of the board members. I think that would solve a lot of problems. I get the sense that that has been an issue over the years. And, um, I guess we need to know, is that procedure in place? That all board members have seen that contract and are aware of what's being signed at the time each year? That's, I think, important.
It seems to me we're, we're overlooking the obvious here. Instead of sitting here pondering the unknown, we have or had historically a communication subcommittee. Why don't we reconstitute it? Why don't we set up a meeting? And why don't we tell them this is what we wanna discuss? What are their financial procedures? What are their protections on their fiscal policies that have been adopted since we had the blow up over the superintendent's contract? And, uh, there's been dramatic turnover on the Board of Education. There are new bodies there, let's sit across the table from them. We either get what we consider straight answers and information that we're comfortable with, or we can come back here, the subcommittee can come back and report. But we can't get straight answers and then we know we've still got a problem. Sitting here scratching our heads, wondering what we can do to hold them to account or what has been done or not done is absurd. They've gotta tell us. If the town, if the town attorney can't speak to their attorney because that's taboo, there's nothing to prevent them from talking to us unless they choose not to. And if they choose not to, then we know we've got a problem.
Okay.
So let's talk to them.
I support that.
Thank you.
It's been, it's all a good idea. You agree, George?
Yep. Fine.
Great. So what do we do with this? Just leave it, we open until that?
Till that subcommittee?
Okay, yes, great.
Yeah, I'm not sure who is on their subcommittee. If they?
Well, they're all packed, they're all new, right?
Yeah, I, we'll have to ask them.
Well, why don't we send the invitation, ask them to constitute a subcommittee of three members, two members, and the superintendent? And let's have everybody sit down together and talk.
Yeah.
We're all big boys and girls, we can, we can do that.
Great.
Next item is Police Commission bylaws, tabled from four seventeen eighteen.
Last I understood that Ben was gonna look over that, um, document. And you were, I don't know if you had made changes or suggested changes.
Yes, I, I actually did send some red line comments to the police commissioners. Uh, I apologize, I thought I included you on that. Uh, I will forward it to you this evening. They, uh, I thought we're going to address it tonight at their special meeting, but it's my understanding, I think to this evening, they were doing a bunch of interviews and they thought that would take a lot of time.
Right.
So they were gonna, uh?
So I guess then it would be, have to be on the?
June meeting?
June fifth.
So they were gonna address it the next?
Wait a minute, what's the first, no, I'm sorry, not the fifth, eleventh, the eleventh.
Their, their regular meeting in June, they were gonna review it. Although they, the majority of them responded to me electronically saying that, you know, they, the changes were fine. But I thought it should, the whole body should, they, they should not engage in discussions over email with me. We should do it at their meeting and then we would bring it back here.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask them to make sure it's on the agenda.
Okay.
Since you made changes, I'm just curious, because I was looking over the bylaws, which I thought we were discussing. And I don't understand why, uh, the third paragraph of section one departs so remarkably from state statute, which is what I thought they based, uh, based themselves upon. And it appears to me, in my reading of it, that the departure from state statute- the departure from state statute then limits the authority of the commission, and that the commission is, in fact, conveying authority granted to them by statute to the chief of police. And if that's the case, I have severe objections to this.
Those were some of the, what I did was, I sat down with their bylaws, I sat down with the state statute, I, I entered comments where I raised questions of concern like that, and I raised, and I did read, uh, some redlining to put it back so it conforms more to the statute. That was, this was a draft that I believe one or two of the commissioners tried to do. I thought they did a nice job on their own, uh, but they hadn't had me review it before they presented it to this body. So I reviewed it subsequent to last month's meeting, and I did raise some issues like that with them, that I wanted to go, out of fairness to them, I wanted to go over with them, because they had invested so much time putting it together, I wanted to understand what they were thinking, uh, so that I can try to capture that. Uh, again, I thought I was going to do that this evening, and then bring it tonight to this meeting, but that meeting, which was a special meeting, uh, was going to be lengthy because of some interviewing, so they wanted to defer it to their June meeting.
Okay, it is not, it is not my expectation that the, uh, Police Commission should be giving up any of their authority that is invested in them to the chief of police.
And, and I also explained to them that, again, their law, their, their governance is not only by our ordinance, but by statute, and what the real purpose of bylaws are, to really give a more of a, kind of a, how they're going to operate as a commission, as opposed to get into statutory provisions and things of that nature. Uh, so, because there were also things within the bylaws that really went more to departmental concerns, that were really more appropriate for, uh, to be embodied within a separate document for rules and regulations, rather than the, the bylaws of the Police Commission. So that's why I wanted to kind of work with them, to find out what they were trying to accomplish, so it can be properly presented and positioned. So I, I don't disagree with you, though.
Okay, thank you.
So once the commission votes on, or you go over it, they're going to vote on it, and then it comes to us?
Well, again, this is their, this, their bylaws, so, uh, they can adopt, they have the authority to adopt their own bylaws. I think it's being referred here for you all to take, see if you have any input, more of a, I think, courtesy to the council.
Oh, okay.
Uh, we would then, after we discussed it and deliberated it, and if they were...
Then it goes back to them.
Recommended changes, it would be sent back to them for adoption.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to new business discussion in action, review of requests for potato and corn festival to extend the hours for the beer and wine tasting.
Yeah, as you recall, the, the April, uh, meeting, the, the council approves the sale of alcohol, beer and wine for the event that they were having on Sunday for the Poco Festival, and, uh, since it had a request, um, from the group to extend the hour, uh, extend the event by one hour, uh, either side, and they are certain, both Lauren and Jen are here to, to answer any questions you may have about extending that one hour.
Any questions?
I think it makes perfect sense. Do we need a motion on it?
We, we have to correct the original motion, because the original motion specified, um, from two to four. So, there is a motion here, um, and I think, rather than put the exact timeframe, I would prefer just to put the hours, and then you guys can determine.
Thank you, because I want to consult with Alex.
Yeah, right, so, um, I would like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council hereby approves an, an extension of one hour for the beer and wine event to be held on Sunday, August fifth, two thousand eighteen, at the Poco Fest, for a total of three hours.
Second.
What's the reason for that?
To give way of assistance for vendors and patrons, more time, go ahead.
Yeah, we're going to have to tend, uh, set up anyway, getting people in and out. We want to make sure that we're not rushing anybody, and making them feel like either they're at the festival, and they've got to hurry up and get over, so they're not missing it. Um, so we want to be able to make sure that we're letting them enjoy the, the festival, and feel like they have time to go to that as well, without everybody being under there in a two-hour wait.
Okay.
As well as for two hours, we were putting up a tent, we have to set up the tent, the tables, the chairs, volunteers, the tickets, so we're doing two, we're hoping to accommodate, make it clear.
Okay.
Roll call?
Mary Jody.
Yes.
Deputy Mary Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell-Warren.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor DeGruen.
Yes.
Counselor Zandkow.
Next is discussion on lifting the hiring freeze for account clerk two in the tax department.
Yes, Catherine Kreider is given notice and creates a vacancy, uh, for that position in the tax office. We'd like to, uh, lift the hiring freeze and, and go out, uh, have to do internal first and then external, and I, actually, subject to the council, will, will move on that, but it's critical as they move into, uh, the collection season, that, that not be understa, we're going to, it's, it's going to be a, a juggling act, just, this is an untimely departure. I should say that it's going to complicate things in, in the office, so I'm, I'm hoping the council will lift it, so I can get, uh, the process going.
And, and looking over tonight's agenda, we've got three, uh, requests for hiring, but they're not really requests for hiring, they're requests for replacement of existing positions, and in reading over it, it almost felt like we're, uh, causing a, a problem ourselves for the operation of the town, for filling positions such as this, and I'm wondering, uh, if we really need to do that. It seems to me that, uh, in, in a situation such as this, if it fell in, in a timeframe where the council didn't meet very quickly, um, it, it would seriously hamper the, the actions of, uh, of town government. So, I'm just, I'm just wondering if we really need to treat vacancies such as these that occurs, such as these have all three, similarly, um, as if it's a, a change in our hiring, it's simply a replacement, and in fact, it's probably, uh, financially not an impact at all, it's probably even, uh, a small savings, since people are coming in at entry level. So, I'm, I'm just kind of questioning why, why we're doing it this way, not that I have an objection to doing it.
Because we have a, because there's, a, a hiring freeze was instituted several years ago, and that has not changed.
Well, I understand the idea of a hiring freeze, Rose, I'm not questioning that.
No, no, so that, that's why it has to come before us, because the hiring freezes, it doesn't matter if it's replacing of, you know, someone that is leaving, that created a vacancy, it's just, it's a matter based on the original motion from before, that there was a hiring freeze. So that means on any position.
I think George's question really is, are, are we building a vote by requiring affirmative vote of this council, when the position already exists? And in response to his question, I think I would say, although it's unlikely that we have excess staffing in this town, it does give us an opportunity to review a position, and make a determination as to the necessity of maintaining the position, so it's entirely possible that although most times we would be inclined to say, yes, let's replace a person, on some occasions, it may be that we choose not to. And I always find it much easier not to fill a position than to lay a position, lay a person off. So, as cumbersome as this might be, I prefer to keep this the way it is.
Okay, that's an answer.
I agree with Joe, and, and to go a little further, I wanted to ask Ken, so what exactly happens if we didn't fill this position? People have to wait one day longer to pay their taxes, or a week longer?
Well, we also have an individual who's out, um, as of today, due to surgery, I want this calm, so that just leaves me.
In good shape?
Yeah, I mean, which is okay, it's just, you know, yeah, I mean, come July, it'll be a...
All right.
But, but it does make sense how Joe, Joe put it, though, that it gives an opportunity for the, the town, the town, uh, the town hall management to look at what, what, if they need to make a change or consolidate something, I mean, there is always that opportunity.
Right.
All right.
Yeah, so, and then I think you know, the, the process I follow, this is, this position is a union position, so, uh, I've got to go through an internal process and posting, which, which I've done, subject to, you know, this body approving it, but could create movement within the union, and then I may be right back here, uh, again, to say that I've got to fill a different position, and, so that, that is the extreme likelihood that that would, that would happen, um...
How, how long do you have to post it, Michael?
By, by, by the bargaining agreement, uh, five-day posting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, which isn't, but again, a week, and then if I have to wait for a council meeting, I've got to get to, to it, so, um, I, I should, I should tell you now, that there, there is, it's posted, there is interest, and, and there's a, there's a viable candidate, so, um, I would almost like to say that I would like permission to...
So, so do you want us to amend the agenda and add another thing, that in the event of a vacancy?
Exactly. Yeah, when it rains, it, when it rains, it pours.
Yeah, but to Joe's point, maybe this person that's moving up doesn't have to, doesn't need to be replaced.
Yeah, then you have to see what that is. All right, um...
Well, let me see, so today's the fifteen.
I don't know that, but...
Yeah, we have to, we have to do this, right?
Well, we, we, we can do the first one here.
Right.
No, I'm not doing the back end.
Not doing the back end.
Right, right.
Yeah, the, the motion for the vacancy that has been created already, that we know about.
Somebody made that motion.
So I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council hereby lifts the hiring freeze to allow the town manager to fill the full-time position of account clerk two in the tax department.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Mary Jody.
Yes.
Deputy Mary Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor DeGruen.
Yes.
Next is discussion on lifting the hiring freeze for the part-time librarian. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council hereby lifts the hiring freeze to allow the town manager to fill the position of part-time library assistant.
Second.
Is this a replacement?
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
Discussion?
What were the hours? Mike, do you know what the hours were, or?
Uh, I do not, I don't have, she's part-timer, I do not have, um, I do not have a...
We have some librarian commissioners here, no one?
No.
Commissioners?
I don't know.
Okay.
So I didn't design.
Yes.
I have a hard time making a decision, blind. Go ahead.
So, what are you doing here?
Well, I was just checking the, it doesn't say any hours on here.
Presumably, it's the same hours that the, uh, person was working.
Well, that's all, it, it's just to replace at the same, it's the part-time position, it's not that they're going to be...
At this part-time, it's no benefits, or anything like that?
Correct. No.
The particular person didn't work a ton of hours, I would say an average of fifteen a week. Twelve to fifteen a time.
Yeah.
Not a lot.
We had a second?
Second?
Yeah.
Yeah, George.
George, yeah, that's right.
George did.
Mary Jody.
Yes.
Deputy Mary Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor DeGruen.
Yes.
Finally, discussion on lifting hiring freeze for custodian libraries.
I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council hereby lifts the hiring freeze to allow the town manager to fill the part-time position of custodian in the libraries. Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Mike, does he have permission to fill, rather than using a cleaning company? Are we ever using a cleaning company, or?
I, I think in the past, and I, but I think in the past, they had, they had some difficulties with it, and they much prefer, uh, to use, uh...
We did this a few years ago in the budget, we got rid of the cleaning company for the libraries, and they had their own custodian.
Yeah, it turned into a nightmare.
Yeah.
With the cleaning company.
It's much, yeah, they absolutely prefer to have their own person.
So is this a new position?
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
He's retired.
We, we've had it for how many years, Anthony?
Five.
Yeah, I was going to say, four or five years. We've had it in the budget, so we got rid of the cleaning company at the libraries, and went with a individual person, because this person, I believe at the time we put it in the budget, they can work during the day, and they can do some other things.
Bob had issues with the cleaning people coming in at night, not able to converse with him, and I, I, you know, identified different projects that he had, and problems that he encountered, with the staff being there during the day, it really works well for the director to be there when the person's there, so he can interact and, and work more closely.
Okay. Okay. Roll call?
Mary Jody.
Yes.
Deputy Mary Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor DeGruen.
Yes.
Counselor Zandkow.
Yes.
Our next is bid award, bid number fifteen, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, town welcome and park identification signs.
Yeah, so the results are there in, in your, your packet, um, and we've gone through the results, um, and the reference checks, and the recommendation is for Sign Light of North Haven for this, for this bid.
Quite a difference in pricing.
It's substantial difference, which makes me wonder, is there any explanation for that?
Uh, a, a few, I think, in terms of, of, you know, material, though, I know Kerry and, and Fran had a lot to do with specking that out, and that, um, I think, just different differences in, in product type, I think. They had some good, good references, and...
So we're, we're confident these people are going to deliver a product we're going to be happy with?
I, I believe so, yeah.
So, but why aren't, why aren't the, the specifications the same? Why would the materials be different?
Well, sometimes they're just...
Yeah, different companies put in...
Variations on, on...
I mean, Sign Light, Sign Light was one, Sign Light was the one that put in the sign in front of the police department, that lit sign, um, what, twenty-five years ago or something, Fran?
Yeah.
Probably.
I think, I think the bid, the guy, the bid, Kerry knows, but it went too old into what, the, the bidder suggested us about painting the sign instead of using the film on it, because of yellowing, and he preferred that it would be better off for us in the long-term, that it was, I don't know if Kerry was painting it, but it was a paint on top of the, the plastic, correct?
Right, he, he just called it a high-performance paint, but his price was based on the paint, but he could also do the laminate overlay, but he just recommended that we go with the high-performance paint, because it lasts longer. And he was, Sign Light was really the only bidder who'd been on our specs. So the other, I don't know, Florentino was missing some information, and Image Three Sixty unfortunately had different size signs, different number of signs, so, we weren't comparing apples to apples with those other two.
Okay.
So Sign Light was really the only one that provided a quote and bid on exactly what we had asked for. With the exception of this lamp, this painting over the laminate overlay, but again, they could do the laminate overlay, they just recommend this as high-performance paint because it lasts longer.
So I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council hereby awards bid number fifteen dash two thousand seventeen slash eighteen town welcome and park identification signs to Signlight of North Haven, Connecticut, for an amount not to exceed eighteen thousand nine hundred.
Second. Discussion?
So, I, I saw in, in the notes, the reason you don't want to specify the number of signs is so that you have a little bit more leeway in exactly where they go and which signs you want to do. Do we have enough money in the account where you're, or this is, that's paying for this, to do all of the signs that they, that were on your bid, this eighteen-nine, because that was their highest amount?
Yes.
And that covered all of them, so we have enough money to pay for all of those if you went ahead with all of them?
Correct, I believe there's twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
There's additional funds, but based on our conversation at the last meeting, there was concerns about, you know, do we want to focus on certain areas of town first, and we may decide that we don't need an ETRN sign at one of the locations that we had originally discussed, so that would just give us some flexibility.
Well, I, and I think part of it also was, because a lot of the signs, we need DOT permission, and, I mean, just to put up an eight-foot sign in some of those areas, I'm not so sure that that's going to work, because of the space that, you know, welcome to, the Village of Northford has three signs on this quote, and some of the areas where it might go, whether it's a six-foot sign or an eight-foot sign, it might not fit there according to the DOT, right, okay?
Probably be beneficial to get the town park signs up as quick as possible, too.
So, Park and Rec Commission has been very interested in.
So if you, if we don't put, if we end up not putting up all the welcome signs because they don't fit because of DOT regulations and everything else, would that allow, because of the eighteen-nine max, would the Park and Rec be able to put up more park signs, because I know there's only three here, but I believe they had more than three signs eventually that they would need, correct? So we could still, they can, you can alter that according to however you want, then?
I think so, right, that, that we could change the agreement with them, when we write up kind of a contract with the bidder?
Yeah, I think we have that flexibility to do that.
Okay.
And it's the expectation that we'll be back to the council with a design, once they show us where the layout, um, as far as the eight-foot, six-foot sign, as well as the font and everything moves on that back by the council.
Well, the other part of this was, didn't we have a deadline of July first?
For.
For installation? Well, I, I thought originally there was, there, there definitely was talk about that when we were going through that, was that not in the bid as a date?
I don't recall if that was in there, but.
Okay.
I mean, could you push them and move as, as quickly as possible?
Okay.
Roll call?
Mayor Higbee?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Foreman?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Vickley?
Yes.
Counselor Zan Cano?
Yes.
Next item is approval of use of NJPA consortium to purchase street sweep burner.
Yeah, this is where we, we have an opportunity.
What's the breakdown of NJPA?
What's the, oh, um.
National Joint College Alliance.
Okay. Yeah, so I think, talking with Fran, that this is a, a pretty good, I mean, a real good quote, that, uh, we're able to piggyback off of this consortium to, to get something, um, but I'll let him speak to the, to the sweeper itself and what they're, what they're getting, but, um, and I don't know really in terms of the timing, but it seems like th- this is something that Fran would like to move on.
You have the floor, Fran.
The, the sweeper, there's only really two in the state that make a three-wheel sweeper. The one that we prefer is on here, and also the other competitor's on here also, but as far as our rooms that we already have in stock and everything, it only goes to the sweeper that currently have the brand, so I thought instead of going out to bid and spend the money bidding it, it shows the breakdown, I think, did you give them a breakdown?
Yeah, they have.
Yep.
So it's, it, but it's a national bid, the state of Connecticut uses it, when they use their own DAS, and we'll get what we want. The other sweeper really doesn't compare to the one that we buy, there's a lot of differences, it dumps from the rear, not the front, so you have to turn around to dump it.
You mean, you mean the one we currently have versus the new?
The one, the, the only other competitor, that, to the one that we have, there's only like two of them, that they have, that are three-wheel sweepers.
So I'd like to make a motion, the North Branford Town Council hereby awards NJPA bid for Elgin sweets, street sweeper to CN North, CN Wood of North Haven, Connecticut, in the amount of two hundred thirteen thousand four hundred sixteen dollars.
Second. So what's the timeframe on this, Fran?
Um, what, as far as getting it?
Yeah.
Delivery.
Probably a couple of weeks.
Yeah. It's not like a truck, then, that takes up to a year?
No, no, they, 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 uh, CN Wood is, uh, they, there's, they're Massachusetts, Connecticut, they got like four or five locations, so they order hundreds of them. So they're already coming and all built, they're all built the same. So so you're not dealing with bodies and plows and stuff like that, it's like buying a back, it's already built.
Okay.
Get it faster than a Mercedes.
So Fran, don't sit down yet. So, on, on this, so this is for, this is for sweeping up after the winter, or what is this for?
We have to sweep the town, uh, twice a year for our MS four, so.
Okay. And how long will this last, us, how many years? What's the life expectancy?
Probably, well, our, this one that we have is, um, uh, two thousand, year two thousand, so we have eighteen years out of it. So we should get at least that out of it, it's, it's, uh, built a little differently, the cab is, uh, sealed from the outside, so you don't get the dust and stuff. Uh, it is all hydraulic, um, there are, different than a kid, the conveyor is a rubber conveyor, uh, that's what we have on this one, they seem to work out very well versus the Squeegee one, which is the other brand, costs around six thousand, so I'm saying at least, I, I would think the next eighteen years, we should.
Probably go longer than that, because we're not doing sand anymore, so.
Well, the, and that's the other thing, the sand is gone, so.
So my.
Unless we go back to salt.
My next question is, and I know, I know, I think you've talked about this, but it just doesn't work out hiring a private contractor to do this?
The problem is, when you have oil spills and stuff, you have to respond, so if we don't have a sweeper, we'll be out there with rooms, so, yes, it does work to have a contractor come in and help, we used to do it, but because we're not using sand anymore, because of our DEEP back years ago with the sand killing everything in the rivers, besides, you know, the salt does, but it was pollutant bad, the, um, we used to have two sweepers going, and it's, and it took us four months, so now we're down to, it takes us about a month, month and a half to sweep the town like we have to, you know, and then when we have construction jobs, we have to sweep up, so have it on hand, and for accidents, well, we, you know, if there's an oil spill, like we've had in the last couple of months, a lot of them, uh, you know, oil trucks or whatever, we have to put it, you have to put sand down and then come back the next day and sweep it up. So it's hard to get a contractor, and most of the contractors that have sweepers, they're all, like, they buy my one, my sweeper.
Right.
Break down and put oil on the ground, so I have to clean it up, so. It's.
Okay.
Good to have.
Are we paying for this?
Credit card.
Credit card. Bonus miles, no, you, you gave him in the eighteen nineteen budget, you gave him enough, enough funds in his reserves to buy it.
So we're not bonding it?
Negative.
No.
Paying cash.
Perfect.
Roll call?
Mayor Higbee?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Foreman?
Yes.
And Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Vickley?
Yes.
Counselor Zan Cano?
Yes.
Next item is review of ZERODAC application process and possible solar project.
Yeah, this is what we, I touched upon earlier when, when Counselor Rose asked about the solar issue, that this is an agenda item, we were hoping to get in front of you, based on the information we had about the state maybe taking away the, uh, zero emission renewable energy credits, which make municipal projects viable for, for companies that come in, and, uh, we began, you know, we've been talking with these companies that are putting projects around us, uh, and so we, we did evaluate and look at the, um, the dump in the landfill, and that didn't work out, and it wasn't, uh, wasn't feasible, but it got us into the conversation of trying to get a, a look at our municipal buildings, and the problem is that it's just restricted to, um, EverSource territories and UI territories, so this program does not apply, ZREC programs not, uh, apply for Wallingford Electric, uh, area, so that, you know, automatically knocks, you know, half, half the town out, so we were, we were just focused on trying to look at savings for the town in terms of doing some solar projects, so, um, the ZREC, uh, we thought was a window that was actually going to open last week, and it really has a short window of, of two, two weeks, or, or maybe three, um, but it's a, it's a tight window in which it's, uh, an auction process where PURA at the state level, uh, issues the ZRECs to the, um, EverSource and United Illuminating, in which then municipalities have projects that they submit an application into, so Carrie and I have been working on this, trying to look at, um, you know, municipal and, and the schools that we have here, so six projects you'll see in the memo, uh, six that, that are eligible, and then they break it down into larger, uh, projects that, that have to go through the auction, uh, process, and then there's smaller projects that go through a, a rolling, uh, application process, so basically, this was going to be a placeholder, uh, to get into, um, submitting an application to, uh, United Illuminating, to see if we could get those ZRECs, and then put out a, um, an RFP for an energy solar company to come in and pretty much turnkey solution for, uh, solar energy under a power purchase agreement, so much like you think of it as, I think of it, uh, as it's sort of leasing your building, your roofs and your land, like you would for a cell tower company that comes in and does everything, and, um, manages the, the, um, project soup to nuts, uh, for, for a twenty-year period. And so our piece of it is, to make it attractive for that, that we, municipality would be holding the ZREC, and then transferring them to whatever the, whoever the town selects as the project winner to do the project, and then we transfer those and get reimbursed, because there is a cost for bond that we have to submit with the application, I think, hold on, um, does it go with the application, or does it go after, Carrie?
After, two to three weeks after.
Okay.
They require the performance assurance bond.
Yeah, so we would have to front-end that, and, and then get reimbursed when we approved or awarded a bid, or the project to the solar companies, uh, it would be reimbursed back to us. Uh, we have an eighteen-month, or actually up, you can get an extension up to two years to do the project, so we began looking, uh, at, uh, trying to pull this together in terms of meeting the deadline, and thought we had more, um, a bigger project than, you know, originally thought, because we're running into things like, you know, putting it on our, on the roofs, um, we all know around, you know, this group and the school, we've had issues with roofs on, on our schools, so, um, you know, we're taking, scaling it back and saying, okay, we, you know, met with the, with, I met with Scott, and I met with Bill Chody, and, and talked about this, and Carrie and I were talking about it. The projects, municipal projects, um, are, um, in order, they go from using the roof, because it's the least expensive, to using ground mounts, and then, and then carports are the most expensive, if you look at like, you know, municipal buildings that have these panels on these carports, uh, so they most often like to put, start with the roof, and if they can't, then go to ground mount, and so with the issues we've, we've had with MBIS, uh, and also, you know, high school, um, our, our projects started to shrink when you start taking that type of real estate off the table, and not be able to put panels on, on the roofs, and the other issue was, quite frankly, was this building i- is also in the mix, um, smaller, but still in the mix, and, and could have, could have both roof and ground mount, but then the question was, we're, we're locking into twenty years, is the town, are we going to be here, or is this a piece of property that's valuable, that we want to move and, and, and sell this, this, and put on the tax rolls and, and move down the road? So, um, you know, it's, it's one of those evolving projects, we were just trying to get this, um, in front of you to, to begin discussing, and whether or not we should take a crack at uh, putting in an application in order to, to, uh, reserve and win the ZREC auction for a specific project, and, and Carrie's done a great job uh, laying this out with the, with the buildings, and there's a ton of information she can walk you through with respect to what we anticipate for savings, but I think it would be the first step in looking at a solar and LED, uh, project within the town, so there's a, I think, two, uh, cost centers that could be reduced, and so we just started with the, with the solar, because we've been talking about it with a lot of different solar companies, I mean, the, um, Green Sky is doing that, uh, project, uh, in North Haven, um, and RWA doing their project right next door to us, there's been a lot of, um, conversations, so, um, I was hoping that we would explore this, um, possibility, uh, but I, you know, and certainly understand that the council may be, um, reserved and, and may not want to upfront the, the money, and it may take, uh, some time to understand this, this program, but I wanted to, I wanted to get this in front of you at this point, to see if there's an app, you know, is there, there's an appetite or a, a desire, uh, to move forward with some type of solar program uh, at this, for the municipal buildings, which would be, you know, Town Hall, Jerome Harris, MBIS, the high school, uh, the fire station, and, uh, Atwater, and the fire station, Fire Company One, and Atwater would be in the smaller, uh, not, smaller, not the large project, so that'd be on a rolling basis.
Mike, Mike, did you, did I hear you say that it's awarded to a company and they pay for, they reimburse us?
Right.
So, so, so it's zero cost to the town?
The, what, right.
And then who, um, the, they control the energy, whoever the project company is?
Well, they, they are, what we get out of it is, um, you know, we're going to get a lower rate, and then the company comes in and gets the payment from, from PURA and the tax, uh, credit that they get from the state, and so they're generating on our behalf, so we're basically leasing them the, the, the real estate, if you will, or giving them authorization to put, uh, panels on the roof or ground mounts, and they generate it, and then we, we benefit by a lower, a lower rate.
Okay, and then if, if a panel had to be moved?
If it, if it's damaged, it's all, it's all on the company to manage it.
No, no, but if it had to be moved, let's say we had to get underneath it, if, let's make believe it's on a roof.
Yes.
And we had to get underneath it, whose cost is that to move it?
That's a good question, and I, I think it's.
I guess those are kind of questions I, I think we probably should write down, and, and maybe, because I, I, you know, they're, they're all good ideas, it, but we have, need to see a breakdown of true cost.
Yeah, I don't.
And what we're going to gain.
I, I don't truly know the answer to that, my, my, my gut tells me that, we've had this conversation about, what do we do at the end of twenty years? You know, that we're going to tell them, hey, you, you take, you take this down, we no longer want to do it, and they take it down, and I think, um, in, in that, that they control the panels, if, I think there's got to be a clause, or certainly I'd refer to the attorney to review any contract we got to, that would say, protect us to say that if we need, obviously, to get to, um, you know, the roof or fix something.
Right.
Is a problem, uh, that they, they would have to, you know, be flexible enough to allow us to do that at their, at their costs, not that, I would hope it wouldn't, wouldn't happen, but you can have to have that safeguard in place.
There's a lot of, um, municipals that are going to ground only and staying away from roof mounts, because they're having problems, their roofs do, like we do. I, I would be in favor of just strictly ground, um, I don't think.
Yeah, I can't see, I can't see putting them on a roof.
Nope.
The only.
Every anchor on the roof is a hole in the roof.
Yeah, I'm not sure the full technical details of how they would do it on a roof, but Carrie might have more information. But, and for the record, you know, meeting with Scott and the superintendent, he was, he was very concerned about anything that went on the roof. And I get that, and I certainly understand, the council would understand that. The only exception was that the auditorium, as a pitched metal roof, I think it's a pitched metal roof, right, that he was okay with that in doing, in that one. But to stay off MBIS and to stay off the high school. So then Carrie had gone through a couple more reiterations of trying to look at land and for the ground mount to squeeze out a little bit more for ground-mounted panels that we would lose by not having the roof. So it's still, I think, a viable project at almost 1.1 megs, I think, in total.
So, right.
And we were, thought we'd be at, thought we'd be at two.
Especially with the amount of land that you have at the intermediate school, high school complex. You certainly have plenty of land for ground mounts there.
There's a certain amount along the backside of MBIS, and I think-
And there's a lot across the street from MBIS, where that field is.
Right, so MBIS, so these are just preliminary numbers. It would be about 57% of the electricity use. Keeping in mind, you know, that's more than half clearly, but the amount of electricity. The utility fee for 2017 for MBIS was over $200,000. So that's clearly our highest utility bill in town. And that would still be a sizable system. But quickly, just getting back to the roof mounts. So for the pitched roofs, they would actually clip on, and we can find out more specifics. But, so they clip on to the aluminum or metal roofs. So there's no penetration into the roofs themselves.
That's what they say.
That's what Scott was concerned about. Even for the flat roofs, they would be ballasted. But understandably, there's been a lot of issues with the school roofs. So to, you know, not put anything on there. There is just a balance with the size of the solar array system that the town looks at and the developer's interest and what they get out of it. So we need to have a system that's large enough for them to get enough of a payback, to pay off their interest and their cost into it. So at the end of it, what we're looking for is the best power purchase agreement rate, which as Mike said, would be less than what we're paying now. So our supply rate now is about 11 cents. So we would want something definitely a lot lower than that. And what the formula is for, you know, how big an array needs to be across town, you know, we can determine through a request for proposals to determine the number of arrays. But it seems like it needs to be maybe around a meg, maybe a little bit less than a meg. And that's, again, you know, with a combination of ground mount and some roof systems.
So it might be of interest to speak with a town that does have roof mount and see what, you know, what the downfalls are on it, that they're running into. Just like Carrie.
Yeah, well, we've revised the projections and proposal numbers to just take both the Town Hall out of the picture, of the equation, and then the roofs, and with the exception of the auditorium, and just go with ground mounts along the property within the area. Except, well, except, I'm sorry, I should clarify that. I was focused on MBIS and the high school. There is a proposal, and do you, do we have the handouts for them?
I think they should be in their packets.
Okay, for Jerome Harris, Harrison's, for that school. There is a plan, there's a schematic for, in terms of layout, for that one, which-
Ground mount?
No, no, roof mount for that one.
Yeah, I wouldn't say there's none of that ground mount.
No, right, right, so that one, and the superintendent didn't have an issue with that school. It was with the MBIS and high school.
See, I have a problem with the sloped roofs. Because if you've ever put a standing seam roof on, they clip together on clips on the roof. The only thing that holds the panels from sliding down the roof, and if you've studied standing seam roofs, you can actually see where they've slid down. There's either a screw or a nail at the top or one at the bottom under a piece of trim. And that's all that holds the light piece of metal from sliding down the roof. So if you're going to clip on the standing seams, you're putting an awful lot of weight on things that are just barely hung there in the first place. They won't blow up because of, there's clips underneath that are screwed down to the structure. But then the roofs clip over each other and clip onto those clips. But until you fasten it normally up under the cap, you can slide that up and down. So there's very little that holds a standing seam roof in place. And I certainly wouldn't want to be putting a whole bunch of solar panels clipped onto the standing seam that's clipped onto a clip with nothing holding it from sliding.
I could tell you tonight, Al, half a Dairy Queen's roof in Wallingford on Route Five is on Route Five. And it's a seamed roof.
Yeah, because it's clipped on.
Yeah, so imagine what that roof would have looked like. It probably would have been in New Haven by the time, you know, the panels got caught under the wind.
So, yeah, roof mounts are, you know, a sloped roof is great for solar. But fastening it is the issue.
So you also mentioned LED, Mike. So do we have, like in the school system, are there any common light bulbs? Like, what's the most common? Four-foot fluorescent, eight-foot? I'm not sure, like, I'm looking around here and they're a little bit different, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that. Certainly something we, I can follow up with.
Because the state, the state has promotions on things. Like, for instance, four-foot LED bulbs that fit in a standard fluorescent fixture for a dollar fifty each, cheaper than you can buy a fluorescent bulb.
Right. Yeah, I just didn't get that far into the discussion.
I don't know, I don't know what we have, though, because if we had something like that, that's a, that's a pretty good deal. You get them at electrical wholesalers. I've been buying them at work. Every month I buy six boxes.
Carrie, is there enough demand at the high school and intermediate school to fit that 1.5 megawatt with solar?
Enough demand, you mean, for the-
Enough wattage?
That, I don't know. But I don't believe there's enough ground space to put 1.5 megawatts on the ground.
Fran?
Unless we take over a plank.
Fran, Dory Drive, between the ball field and the high school fields?
Yeah, I thought to Carrie about that piece.
How, how big is that piece?
I'm not sure.
An acre?
Oh, probably two, two and a half acres, probably.
So they can't fit 1.5 and two and a half acres?
So they estimate 200 kilowatts per acre. So, and I thought it was printed in your folder, but we had circled two areas. One in between MBIS and Caputo Drive. Yes, and then the other smaller one, I think, is the area that you're talking about. They had, there was an approximate, approximation of just under 200 kilowatt system, just on that smaller circle. And I don't know how wet that area is. I know there is a stream or swale there. But the area along Caputo Road as a comparison-
That's the hill that comes down, isn't it?
Yes, so that, just as a comparison, they could fit almost 700 megs, excuse me, kilowatts.
So you have 700 and 200, so you have 900, and they're looking for 1.5.
Yeah, so.
Maybe we're looking at the wrong way. Maybe we should be looking at making buildings more efficient and then going to solar.
They've got a brand-new building.
Yeah, our brand-new building is the most inefficient building that we have. Bizarre.
It's an energy hog, for sure. It's the biggest one. And we can't get enough to, I mean, we can only get enough to cover maybe half of it.
Right.
And the other thing is some of the issues with distance in terms of using the ground mounts and the distance from the meter, I guess, from what I understand, and, you know, trying to-
Efficiencies.
Yeah, the efficiencies.
Right, so to answer your question from before about if we use just an old haylot or something that, you know, the town owns but we're not currently using, I think that would fall into this category called virtual net metering because the town doesn't have a building there. We would be able to generate solar and then just put it onto the grid. But I think that program is no longer, or it's not currently active because we looked into it. But it's not an option.
So again, I would ask Bramford, because they're doing it down at that Tabor property that they were in court with for years. And it's a huge thing that's nowhere near any of their buildings. So again, I would ask Bramford, like, how are the numbers working for you guys?
Terryville is quite a ways away from the high school.
Are those already built or in the process of?
They're building them right now.
Terryville's been up for a couple of years.
Bramford is.
Yeah, and it may, it may just, and I'll check with them, I'll call. But it may be because they were in a different round in which they got authorized previously. Like this one, if we were in it, we'd have up to two years from whenever they set it in June or whatever the auction is.
I mean, if you wanted to do it, if you're going to do it, go big. And you'd take the 11 acres right at the corner of 22 and Mill Road, and you'd put in this 11-acre thing, and then you'd dig a ditch over to the high school and the other school, and you'd run them.
Where would the sunflowers go?
Putting a couple little things on a little roof is crazy, you know?
I think the sunflowers between the panels. They got roadways between them.
But, and then having said that, and I know from, you know, whenever I go up to Vermont, which you would think is, you know, it's the green mountain state, but you ought to see the nasty letters to the editors on wind and solar. Yeah, yeah, the same people who think they're all green and have a small carbon footprint are the ones writing the letters, like, a solar farm is ugly. And I hear the wind, windmills turning, and where are the, how are the migratory birds going to fly? And so we probably never could put a solar farm on property because we'd have this huge outcry that we're ruining somebody's view.
All right, I'll move the table until Michael talks to Bramford.
Well, see how, see how their numbers are working. And like you said, maybe it is early, maybe they got in.
Yeah. Well, then we'll look at, we'll look at the virtual net metering and land for ground mount and put some more definition to this.
But I, getting back to the intermediate school being that bad, there's got to be something wrong over there.
Space, cubic feet. You go in that building, it's just, you go into the stairwells.
They're huge.
It's phenomenal.
And it's tall.
It's tall, it's massive, this common space, this new philosophy, I don't know why it's mad about it, but common space, the way we teach kids today. It's just, it's created a building that is very big and very inefficient. And I'm not sure how we're going to fix that, if we're going to fix that.
Maybe a fuel cell and solar and wind.
Maybe we should be building a nuclear power plant in town, you know?
All right, moving on. Next is review of a request from Totoka TV for live broadcast.
Yeah, this came up last meeting, and we discussed, there's a letter in response from Walter Mann. And I think Kelly was here at the end of the meeting to explain a little bit about that as well. And I wanted to have him reduce it in writing that it would be secure in terms of going live. I don't know if you had any further questions about that or not? Oh, you want me to, I mean, I could call other towns, I could find out how that-
Why don't you go ahead and do the Board of Ed first and then-
Let's volunteer the Board of Ed to go first and see how it works.
Yeah.
Bramford broadcasts live.
They do.
I mean, I don't think it matters, we don't, we don't edit what's going out there tomorrow. Does anyone else?
No, I don't have a problem.
As long as I shut her up for executive session.
Yeah, she kills the feed when she does that.
Believe me, there's a lot of things I wish I could take back, you know?
Somebody want to make a motion to go live?
I make a motion that the town council meetings be broadcast live on Totoka TV.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
And Counselor Fawn?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Biglino?
Yes.
And Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next item is suspense report for 2017-2018.
These are just a list of files that, at this point, we find uncollectible. And they will remain on the books for 15 years. And then at that point afterwards, they're purged. But they're still collectible should they be found. I mean, obviously, not that the people that are deceased aren't, you know, uncollectible. But if anyone else shows up, those that we can't find, we can still take their money.
We are to hereby resolve that North, North Bramford Town Council accepts the recommendation of the tax collector and agrees to put the following taxpayers on the list provided onto the suspense list pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 12-165.
Second.
So is this everybody?
The list that we have here.
It's just a list that you have. I mean, I can go through every grand list year.
No, no, but for, I'm asking, is this, so there's nobody else in town? That's, I mean, this is everybody that's deemed not payable or not going to pay?
Not collect-
Not collectible, I'm sorry, thank you.
This is just the ones that have hit the threshold-
They've hit the threshold, you know, deceased is one category, but they've gone through the marshal, they've gone through the collection agency, and we're coming up with nothing.
Okay.
So just moving the-
You're just moving a category. It's still part of the receivables for the town.
All right.
Further discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawn?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Biglino?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is contingency appropriation for Stanley T. Williams Roof Repair.
You may recall at a previous meeting, there were a couple of proposals presented for repairs at Stanley T. Williams. One from Eagle Rivet totaling $62.50, and another one that was significantly higher. And I did verify that the Eagle Rivet price, I talked to the person who wrote the estimate back in March of 17, and the price still holds. And so the contingency appropriation is to accomplish those roof repairs at Stanley T. Williams. Further quote from Eagle Rivet.
I'd like to make a motion that the town manager is hereby authorized to appropriate from reserve for contingency account 101-4703-760-0000 and transfer into the appropriate accounts as soon as possible for the following purpose. STW Roof Repair for $6,250.
Second.
Where's it leaking? On our side of the Board of Ed, sorry.
I think-
The whole building's in need of it.
Lauren can tell us, I think it's on our side.
No, we're saving a lot of money by closing that school. It can't need repair. Oh, we just haven't realized the savings yet.
That's it.
Roll call?
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawn?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Biglino?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
All right, Anthony, your financial report.
Financial report remains unremarkable. Again, the typical suspects that I look at every month, the top line being tax collections just about on target with last year at 99%. Overall revenue, again, slightly ahead of last year, 100.2% of budget compared to 89.3. Bottom side of the ledger- Bottom side of the ledger, the expenditure side, just about right on target with last year, 79.8%. No departments are over expended and it's shaping up another, another positive year in North Branford.
Thank you. Next item is appropriation transfers.
Transfers, the bottom one is just the, you had budgeted money towards the balance of the Birdland project and that's just moving the, mechanically moving the money. The top one, as Councilor Big Leown had mentioned earlier, there's some significant repairs to engine one and this is some of the action the fire commission has taken to try to move some money around to cover those repairs.
I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council hereby approves the following appropriation transfers as recommended by the town manager and the treasurer and finance director.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawn?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Big Leown?
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano?
Yes.
Last item is, I shouldn't say last, next is tax refunds.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawn?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Big Leown?
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano?
Yes.
Last item is Councilor Diamond's hiring freeze for a police officer.
There's a theory as a potential having a vacancy in the police department in the next 60, 90 days. I'm asking for, on behalf of the commission, to lift the hiring freeze if that occurs so that they can get somebody into the academy.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, so if it's not going to happen for 60-
If it's not going to happen, then it's a moot point, but-
60 to 90 days.
Then, then you're too late to get somebody into the academy. Then, you know, you have to wait, I don't know, Mike, how long you wait, you wait a-
Wait till the next class. It's usually, you know, what, six months, George?
No, they, they stagger every 13 weeks or so, they, they train-
They run two classes?
They run two classes 52 weeks a year and it just gets staggered. But, you know, I thought that they were looking for laterals. That was the last time-
I think they kind of exhausted that.
Yeah, I think they, I think that's exhausted.
So what, what list are they working off of?
We don't know. That's, that's a bone of contention.
So what, what do they need to secure a spot in the academy? Is that what you're trying to do? Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood what.
It's only, it's only a potential at this point, but it's a problem.
It's not that, it's not that they secure a spot, they ask for a spot and then when the class is ready to be filled, if the department doesn't have a body, then it simply rolls down to the next one. I guess they're asking for permission to ask for a spot.
Just get on the list.
All right.
Motion, second. Discussion, roll call?
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawn?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Big Leown?
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next item, citizen statements and petitions.
Just one thing before we leave. Earlier, we talked about the Board of Education and the procedures and Joe had suggested that the communication committee reconvene and do this. I know I'm on it and I believe Joe is on it, I don't know who.
Anthony was awesome.
Okay, so since we're getting to the end of the school year for the, for the school district and things become quite busy, I would just like to suggest, Mike, to reach out to the superintendent and get some possible dates.